... County Commission if there was a county commission. My heart has always been with children and I would like to be re-elected to come to office. Thank you. Tree?
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tree Low and I am running against, uh, Lake County School Board, this is District 4. I am running against Ms. Debbie Seibner. I was born in Vietnam, raised in Orlando, graduated from UCF with a business marketing degree. Uh, in my early twenties, uh, I had the opportunity to start a business, a transportation business, with fifty dollars to my name. I was able to get, uh, involved with the Federal Transportation Administration. Uh, we developed a contract and, uh, I provided service to the economically depressed area to, uh, in an effort to try to economic growth by providing transportation to the residents to and from work. And then thereafter, uh, I bid for a, you know, contract to provide non-emergency medical transportation service for Osceola, Orange, in Central County, and we won part of that contract. And, uh, so, uh, I do have a lot of experience. Um, in the last nine years, I became a full-time mom, so that way I could concentrate on my, uh, personal life instead of my business career, and I have been very happy to do that. It's given me a lot of opportunity to learn about our school district. I invested between twelve to fourteen hundred hours, um, on an annually basis, uh, in volunteering our school system. So, um, I do have a lot of, uh, business experience, and I also have a lot of, uh, experience with our school district.
Thank you. Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Miller. Uh, I have a call. I was, uh, elected a couple of years ago to District 1, but because of redistricting, I'm now in Leesburg area. I've lived in Leesburg since they moved here in seventy-seven, but, uh, so now I'm running for District 2. I have a handout here for everybody. When you get the handout, you'll see my, actually, my brochure from last year is all still. Uh, I was successful in two business careers, still in real estate. Uh, my first career was running grocery stores up north as a, uh, with a large chain. Then down here, I opened up a small independent where I was owner and for that. So I understand both ends of that. Um, then on the other side, you'll see that I also coach, and I've been coaching, not Bob McKee, I've been coaching a long time, but a long time. And, uh, anyway, that started with coaching, and I've been doing that, and I've been mentoring for about fifteen years now. So, I am, and also on this side, you'll hear about world-class schools. Um, I did, uh, that for about five years in the late nineties, which was a chamber-led school reform movement. Uh, so I've been passionate about kids and improving their, their lives and trying to improve our schools all that time. And recently, I was just appointed to the, uh, Commissioner of Education, uh, Digital Two Point Oh. School's Life.
Good afternoon. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Roseanne Brandtger, and I was elected in two thousand eight, and my focus then was, I believe, every child deserves the best education, and I believe that to be true today. I have a master's degree in Business Administration from Nova University and a bachelor's degree in Public Relations from the University of Florida. In June of two thousand ten, I was one of only four school board members who were elected in two thousand eight to become a certified school board member. You might ask, why is that important? Well, as a school board member, you have to learn so many different things, including policymaking, decision-making, financials and school funding, legislative issues, collective bargaining, and so much more. My son Tyler is a junior at Leesburg High School, and when he started at the Villages Elementary of Lady Lake, I was on the PTO and SAC for all six years. I was staying at Carver with being PTO president at both the Villages and at Carver, and for the last three years, I've served on the school advisor committee at Leesburg High School. In addition, I serve on many boards, including the Educational Foundation, the Take Stock in Children, and I chair the Education Committee for the Leesburg Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a member of the Chamber Alliance. I also serve on the Florida Council for Resource Development and the Florida Council, uh, Florida College System Foundation. Thank you very much.
William Rose, ready to call Bill?
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Phil Mathias, and I get really nervous talking, because most of the time I listen. Um, I started my company, Mathias Food Service, thirty years ago this month, and have had like this, uh, in this community. However, my company goes beyond here. We're actually wonderful. We do design work in fourteen countries right now and forty states. I have a bachelor's degree in business and my master's degree is in organizational management. And why am I running for school board? My wife asked me that. This is that, real quick. I bought a company two years ago. I added on to my facility in Leesburg with intentions to move there. All of the top management came to me and wanted to stay in Orange County because of the school system. If I'm elected, I will, I will work very hard to set the A rate of this ring so that we can bring those to Lake County.
Go to it. And Jane?
Jimmy. My name is Jimmy Nussbaumer. Uh, my parents lived in Groveland when I was born. I was fortunate to graduate from Groveland High School. Um, I have three children, two of which have gone through Southlake Schools. I have a twelve-year-old son now that is in grade, so, uh, I've got a lot of experience with my children also in the, in the Southlake Schools. Um, uh, I'm fortunate that I was able to take over, uh, Southlake Electric in nineteen eighty-eight, which is a business that my father started in Groveland, and, uh, been there ever since. I spend a lot of time with the school advisory council, been chairman for many years, um, at each, at each school, actually, uh, in Groveland Elementary and Gray Middle School and at Southlake High School. So, uh, so my, my experience with the schools has been in the school itself, not, not a ton of it at the school board level, however, it all affects what to do there. Also, uh, I serve on the, uh, Board of Directors of Lake County Youth and Agricultural Fair, uh, served on the board at our church, uh, Groveland Mettles Church, and also the youth director there. And I also serve on Lake County Academy Board of Directors currently. Um, so my passion is, is definitely the education of our children and their opportunity and to use my experience and my knowledge to, uh, do the best I can for them and see our schools give them a great opportunity. So I appreciate it.
All right, thank you all very much. Second, the topic is, uh, the question. Okay, Debbie, I'm going to start with you. If you want any parts, any of you of these repeated, because some are smart questions, uh, I'd be more than happy to do that. All right, first question. If teachers are not evaluated by the success of their students, what are your beliefs regarding teachers passing a competency examination to evaluate their knowledge of the subjects they teach? And second part, do you agree teachers should be supervised in the classroom as part of their evaluation?
Okay, well, she's about to remember this. If teachers are not evaluated by the success of their students.
Right.
Uh, what are your beliefs regarding teachers passing a competency examination in their, to evaluate their knowledge of the things they teach? Well, the first thing is Rank to the Top, which is a new initiative set by the state federal government, is a program that will evaluate the teacher, and it does have a component in it where the students can also evaluate the teacher. So that is something that is going into implementation as the school year is coming up. Um, the second part with teachers.
The second part is, do you agree teachers should be supervised in the classroom as part of the evaluation?
And as part of the Rank to the Top, they are going to be evaluated, and that's already started. We are doing some of that right now to get them for, so that they're ready for the school year that's coming up. But that has to be in place, and we will be doing it until the next school year.
Okay, thank you. Tree, uh, would you like it repeated, or can you pick up?
Uh, well, basically, um, as Debbie has mentioned, we do have Rank to the Top, and basically, it is in placing a lot of evaluations, uh, to our students and towards our teachers. So evaluation is in place. Um, my biggest concern about evaluation is that it may take away from the creativity that our teachers can teach, and that's one thing that I hear a lot in our community, uh, amongst our teachers as well as, uh, parents. Um, so there needs to be, um, a guideline between evaluation process and allowing our teachers to teach and be creative. The second thing is, would I support our teachers being supervised, uh, in the classroom during the evaluation process? Absolutely. I think, uh, we already have set in place where, uh, administrations do monitor our teachers during the evaluation process.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Uh, yes, we're, we're well on our way to doing it that way. The Marzano method, uh, is the method we adopted, and basically, teachers become more of a coach and mentor than a lecturer, and the, and the kids work on their own and, and become in charge of our education. It's a totally different concept than what we've done all these years. It will be extremely, it will be added tremendously by, uh, technology. Uh, if you will Google Falcon, S-A-L-K-H-A-N-T-E-D, you will see the future of education. And basically, what happens is the, uh, is a platform in the sky that, it's on the internet, it's free, uh, that kids can learn their lessons and do their work, and they have to be a hundred percent proficient to move forward. So basically, computers can take care of all the drudgery work from teachers, can, uh, all the drill work, if you will, uh, and the teacher, the parents, the students, uh, district office, talent, even the feds, all instantly will know when that kid is a hundred percent proficient. So it will take up a lot of reports that they have to do, a lot of drudgery work they have to do, and free them up to work one-on-one with kids so they can, the ones who are stubborn, scrubbing. It is an amazing system. Uh, I've just spent a bunch of time away from home studying this stuff, and I'm very excited about it. I think it's going to be how we move our nation forward to number, back to number one. Uh, we're not anywhere close to that right now, but it's the opportunity for us to get there.
Okay, thank you. Roseanne?
Thank you. And with the Race to the Top that has already been mentioned, that is in place, and actually, I will be heading up to Cincinnati a week after next with the superintendent, Be Grassel, uh, for the second round of meeting for Race to the Top. One thing I want people to know is, we want to see all of our teachers succeed. We want to make sure that our teachers are receiving the professional development that they so richly deserve. Our teachers do come to us with a college degree. They must be certified in the field that they are teaching. Now, they can, you know, they don't, they're not certified, all of them, to teach social studies, but within three years, they have to be certified. With regard to the evaluations, most definitely, our teachers want to know how they're doing. I've also done classroom walkthroughs with some of the principals to see what is happening in our classes, how are the students being engaged? And so I think that, uh, with the, having the feedback is going to be very important, and I think that there's a lot more acceptance than resistance to the process.
Thank you. Bill?
Evaluations are just good for business, and I absolutely support that teachers are evaluated and that they are given positive and negative, uh, reports on how their progress is perceived, uh, or their competency. I do have some concern about who does the evaluation, that at my company, department supervisors, they will give me a report. Ultimately, if it's deficient, I'll sit in and then I'll form my own report and then sit down with the employees. It should all be framed in a positive environment. That's the way I see it. And I just say, what better?
And I believe in evaluation, and also, like, a lot of times, we get off the bottom line, and we talk about all the evaluation. The bottom line is where, where teachers are to be educating our children, and, you know, if we're, if we're producing children that come out that can't pass a competency test, then we're not doing our job. Um, so we, we've got a lot of better ways to evaluate them, um, to make sure that they're, they're not only teaching, that they can manage the students. Coming out of college with a, with a degree that allows you, uh, to know the information is one part of it. Dealing with, uh, the kids in the classroom, when I sit in and watch the children, um, give these teachers a hard time, uh, you know, being able to deal with them is, is a part of being able to educate them. Um, if they're running rampant in the class and they can't do it, uh, deal with them, you can't teach your other children. So I, I think there's a whole lot more to it than just evaluating their, their knowledge of, and their degree in that subject. So I think we absolutely have to evaluate the entire product, the ability, and, and also evaluate our children's education, because if the teachers aren't, if they're not getting educated, then the teachers somewhere are failing, and we as a school system are failing. If that product doesn't come out, those children don't come out educated and able to pass the competency test. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, we'll start with you, Tree, on the next question, which is again a two-parter. So be sure any of you ask me if you need to hear it again. Do you plan to review department budgets to look for cuts? Or do you believe an across-the-board cut will take care of meeting the annual balanced budget requirement? That's part one. Part two, what experience do you bring with regard to budget planning and strategic business organization?
When I get elected, my focus would be putting our resources in educating our students, making sure that we are producing, uh, students who can read, write, and do the basic mathematical problems by the time they get to ninth grade. So our focus needs to be on education, and with, for our high school students, we need to look at, um, you know, providing more vocational courses or electives. So, yes, I will review the budget, and I don't believe that it should be cut across the board. There are areas that we'll need to improve and put more money into it to make sure that we are meeting our core competency. The other thing is, what experience do I bring in this, to the table? I have years of experience in business. Uh, my background is business marketing, and, um, so I do understand the front end of the organization as well as the back end of the organization, and we need to make sure that these are balanced, and that our consumers or stakeholders are happy that we are doing what we need to do as a school district, and that we're making sure that our teachers, which is the back end, are also happy because they're all literally being put in the front end to teach our kids. Thank you.
Jim?
Uh, when I first ran for office, I sat through all the, uh, budget meetings that we had before, uh, as a candidate. And also as a candidate, I took the, uh, financing, uh, seminars that the Florida School Board Association put on. I audited that time, I took it again, so I've had it twice on the budget. Um, at that, in those days, they used to check every line, line by line, and I thought that was, uh, just not the way to do it. To me, staff needs to do those things. And, uh, and indeed, the next time staff, this is a research, like, and they brought us ten or ten items, a way to cut the money, and, and, and then we decided which ones we felt were the one best way to go to get to them. We had to cut eight million dollars in the middle of time, so that has, and so they're the ones who are in the trenches. They can see where we can cut. I also think all these cuts have been helping us. It's helped us look at what we do and why we do it, and it's, frankly, there's some things we're doing that we just do because we've always done, and we really don't need to do anymore. So I think it's a positive situation, and I think staff is the one who needs to do it. We make the final decisions, but get in there and look at everything they do, it's much manageable.
Thank you. Roseanne?
When I was elected four years ago, people wanted to see fiscal responsibility. They wanted to see transparency, and those were two of my, my focuses. And so at that time, we did go through the budget, line by line, for two years in a row, and it wasn't a necessary, uh, exercise to go through, because there was funding that just rolled over from year to year. While I may need a computer next year, I may not. And so those dollars were removed out of the budget, and so if something was needed, the superintendent did have, uh, some funds if that was absolutely necessary. What is my experience? I have a master's in, uh, Business Administration, as I shared. I have worked at Lake Sumter Community College for the past eleven years as executive director of the foundation, where I manage over a twelve million dollar budget, and I have for the, for the years that I've been there. And prior to that, I worked in healthcare public relations and marketing for six years, where I, each year I had over a million to two million dollar budget that I worked with.
Thank you. Bill?
Someone in the audience, Vance, said at an other meeting, that if you're going to run for school board, you better know about the finances of the system. I've had one meeting with the CFOs for Lake County Schools. We had a magnificent lunch, and actually, we spoke about, um, making the budget and so that basic business people can understand. It is very, very complicated that, that in my life, we benchmark in business, that we look at what other companies of similar nature are doing, and you want to see what kind of money they're spending. That actually, from that luncheon, uh, we rescheduled another meeting for tomorrow, where she said that maybe you could be helpful to me and be able to articulate the budget where it's, that we can understand it, and we can understand it, and that there are areas that can be cut. They're of the opinion right now that it's cut to the bone, there's no more cutting to be done. I'm not so convinced of that at this point. I was on the school board for nine years at St. Paul's Catholic School. We learned to do more with less, and so if we educate for fifty-seven hundred dollars, that's to benchmark, and the public schools are thirteen thousand, is the new proposed per student, there's got to be some explaining that spread. As far as being organized, that's my master's degree, or presidential management.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Well, um, through my experience in the school, um, I guess it's a good way to say that my motto is, you can be the best electrician in the world, but that doesn't make you a businessman. Uh, there's a big difference between, um, being good at, 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 at doing a job and then running a business. Um, seeing the schools that we, we have people that are managing budgets on a school level, and, and I know we talk about the budgets line by line, and, and I've studied the school budget, um, very in depth, and I know we talk about the school board, it's a big, it's a big difference between the school board's huge budget and each individual school, and, and I get the thing, well, if you start talking about these schools independent, you're micromanaging. But I believe the problem, one of our biggest problems is, is we have a, we have a negative attitude. Um, in two thousand and six, I was building a house paying huge amounts of, of taxes, and, uh, I got a letter home from one of my schools that says, from a science department, said, as you know, Lake County Schools doesn't have enough money to educate our children, so we need you to pay ten dollars for a lab piece. I blew a gasket. Um, so I went back to the school, and I started studying their budgets and finding out all the different budgets that they have. Um, I believe one of the problems is, is our attitude is, we don't have enough money because they don't know how to manage the budget that they're in charge of. We have principals that are in charge of huge budgets. Um, I'm just looking over, um, some of the budgets of the elementary school, and they're asking the site members to approve a, a budget. They don't want to explain to them what's going on in the passion, so give me just an extra second, please, shoot them. But, but, but they don't understand how to budget money, and, and you've got the teachers and the, and the, and the people that are in charge of their departments, well, we don't, we didn't have enough money last year, so we're holding on to our money, and then we've got departments that don't actually have money. I believe educating the people. Believe they're not learning, um, how to manage and how to budget, individual budgets if they are responsible.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you came out of that live.
Roseanne, I'm sure you do that. Um, plan for new budgets of each department or as a whole, and take a percentage, and this is the first part of your, part of your question. And just like Roseanne has, has stated, the first two years that I have been on the board, we went line by line, because we had constituents out there saying there was money places that, uh, they didn't know where the money was. So we went line by line in every department, and we had more meetings than I think the school boards have ever had. Um, we did cut back, and what we have done as a board, because we are working together, is we've directed staff, they know what we want to see, where we want things cut, where we want the money put into the schools with the students, and they have been bringing us back the last two years, a budget that we don't have to go line by line. And with, and I don't have enough time to explain where all the money goes, uh, maybe that'll be another question. Budget experience, uh, I was planning and zoning and co-deforcement director for Lake County for twelve years back in the eighties and early nineties, and we had to do a budget for the Board of County Commissioners. Then I was on the City of Taverres Council, we had to do a budget for the City of Taverres. I was, I worked for the City of Leesburg, I was the economic director and the airport manager for two years, had to do a budget there, and had to go to the federal government because of the aviation part of it. And I sat on the Board of County Commissioners for eight years, and we definitely went to budget line by, uh, line, and Mr. McKee can tell you that. We, we made sure everything was the way it was supposed to be. Uh, so I have that experience. I may not have the educational experience that everyone else, but I have a hands-on experience.
Thank you. Uh, we're running a little short of time. I, you had the same amount of time there before, but we're probably going to cut our number of questions back. Uh, this is the next one, Jim, I'm going to put my glasses for this one, but it is one part.
Okay.
Recent news articles explain the inequities in Lake County salaries in the tiers of school employees. For example, administrators pay rank eleven to thirteen highest out of all the sixty-seven counties. Support staff secretaries, salaries, excuse me, let me repeat that. Support staff salaries rank, rank among the state's lowest. Teachers' salaries rank fairly low as well. And the question is, do you believe these inequities are important enough to be reviewed by the school board before the next budget is set? And if you do, how will you attempt to adjust for a more equitable, equitable pay allocation to teachers and support staff?
Well, um, I've only had one budget that I've approved, but, um, we gave nobody rates last year. We gave bonuses to our teachers and support staff, and that's a, I think we did do the administrative, everybody got a, a bonus to no rate, and, um, there just is no money to raise. Uh, that situation happened before I got there, uh, I think it happened before, uh, Debbie or Roseanne got there too, uh, the administrator's, uh, previous superintendent was a parent administrator as well, and that, that's how they got skew, and we haven't had time to really adjust it, because we had no money to adjust it with. Uh, we could, I guess, in theory, take money from the administrators, but that would be what we'd have to do to balance, because we have no money to give anybody else.
Okay, Roseanne?
At the school district, we have what's called collective bargaining. So we have collective bargaining for the teachers' union and for the service employees' union. And so during the year, we have staff from both of the district and from the union sit down to go over the contract and areas that we can, um, change. And one of the big things every year is salary. I wish we could give the staff more money. Right now, we just don't have the funds to be able to give them the increases that I do think that they deserve. And so, uh, we are working through that right now. We're still through the collective bargaining process, so I can't really tell you what is on the horizon, but we do incorporate that into the budget planning. And so there are inequities. We did address that last year, especially with, uh, some of the support staff at the, at the, uh, schools, including the, the data processors, because they really were, were paid very well.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Did you say that our administrators are eleventh in the state?
Eleven to thirteen highest out of the sixty-seven counties.
Okay. There should be some relationship between the fact that we're forty-fourth in the state and their pay scale. That's just how I feel about it. I want to speak, and I'll, I'll have nothing to do with the budget, but I would be speaking for them, quite honestly, but I will tell you, Phil, it's like, you know, I have been paid at Mathias. My salary is based on my lowest paid employee. That's my salary. It's up to me to lead a profitable organization, and that's what I get to return on. With this last recession, that, that I was the first to take the pay cut, uh, actually, my wife is a payroll fee, but we didn't take a check for six months so that we could fund our authorities. It's important that you take care of those that are, um, that are educating our children, and I would be, if I were on the board, hearing that number, which I just heard, I would be taking a serious look at it.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to stop here before Jimmy comes in and say, these people did not see any of these questions before it is. So, uh, any news here, if they didn't get it from another source, anything in the question is brand new to them. I just wanted you to know that. All right, Jimmy?
And I'm going to give some of my time back. Um, I, I believe, I believe a, a person is worthy of their hire. I don't believe we should, um, pay somebody based on a title. I don't believe we should pay somebody based on a title.
All right. That was very nice, very short. Debbie?
Yes, ma'am. When I was elected four years, three and a half years ago, that was the question back then as to the salaries of the administrators. And as Jim has said, that was something that was put in place before Roseanne and I got on board, or Jim. We have, the majority of the stuff that you, that is within that question of the tiers and discrepancies, has to do with the union and collective bargaining, which we cannot talk about. However, we have, in a public meeting requested, and I personally requested it, that we do have a study of all the salaries in comparison to everyone around us, and particularly the support staff. I was a worker bee. I know that you need to be paid. They are the foundation of what goes on in schools. The teachers teach the kids, but without them there to do all the paperwork, and to monitor them, and do the discipline, et cetera, we have no school. So I have been an advocate of that since I've been here, and there's only so much because it is collective bargaining that I can do. I thought I could come right in and change the whole scale. It doesn't work that way, so I'm working on it.
Okay. Tree?
You know, salary is one of the issues that a lot of our educators and school employees are concerned about, and I think it's one of those issues that is decreasing their morale at this point in time. And I understand, you know, funding is one of the weaknesses in our organization at this point in time, and unfortunately, there's not a whole lot that we can do about it at this point in time. However, I do believe that, you know, we do have very good teachers out there in our school district, and we do have some that need to be let go. But I do believe that our professional educators need to be compensated and make sure that, you know, we increase their morale, and we need to send a message that we recognize you as a professional, and we hold you accountable, and we want to compensate you because you are a professional, and we want to make sure that, you know, we keep a level of competitive in salary range with all the professionals out there. So I wish we had the funding, and once we do, I hope to have the opportunity to evaluate the salary range that our educators and our employees are receiving at this point in time.
Okay, the Tower of the Bean County, we do have one more question. So I believe we start with you, Roseanne, and this is a two-part again. A substantial number of ninth graders do not complete high school. To what do you attribute the low graduation rate from Lake County High Schools? And what are your recommendations to increase the number of graduates? And second, what do you feel the impact of academic achievement levels of C and D schools here in Lake County has on these graduation rates?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question because Lake County has graduated, I'm going to start over. We have seen a 13% increase in our graduation rate in the last five years. Lake County is at 82.2%. The state average is at 80.1%. I'm not bribing, but we are above the state average. We are on the increase. We are seeing a climb each and every year. Our dropout rate continues to decline. It right now is at 2.9%. That's not satisfactory, but at least it is going down. What I attribute to the increases in our graduation rate is our career in technical education programs. Lake County Schools has 38 different career academies throughout our high schools. I saw some numbers just yesterday with certification that these students are getting from these different programs. In 2008, eight students graduated with their certification. Last year, 404 students graduated with a certification. So we are seeing our students stay in school because we are motivating them, we are getting them excited into things other than just the courses that they have to go through, but they can go into culinary arts, digital design, environmental science, agriculture, and a number of others. And we also have wonderful business partners throughout our community that is assisting with our career technical programs at our high schools. Thank you.
All right, Bill?
This is definitely not a two-minute answer, because it is much more complicated. That it goes to the core family, it goes to the economic conditions and the execution of the family. That early intervention is where we have to look. That I'm a huge advocate of vocational education, that in 1983, I had a foster child. He was not going to graduate, it was obvious. And I worked with Ken Bragg, and we developed the culinary foods program that you have today at the Botech Center. That you'll find no stronger advocate than me, that everyone is not going to go to college, and that we have to find a way to inspire these young men and women to learn a vocation.
Well, you did very well. Yeah, I know you did. Jimmy?
I have to agree very strongly with these two. I'm a huge proponent of the vocational and our career academies. You know, the little question is, is what am I ever going to need this in life for? What am I going to need this math for? What am I going to need this for? And if we can show these students how and why they're going to need to be able to read a tape measure, or be able to read a measuring cup if they're going into culinary arts, when you start answering those questions as to why they need their math, their reading, and their science, and how it applies to their life and the future, and what they believe they're going to do, then I believe they understand and they start realizing why they need to learn the tough math questions that they're being asked, or the tough science questions, because it is going to apply to their real life when they get into the real world. And that gives them a desire and a reason to start learning the basics, so.
Okay, Debbie?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not going to repeat what they said because Roseanne had the fact, I'm pretty darn sure of it. But one of the items that we do have is, we have the highest score ever for eighth graders in the S-CAP this time, which will be your ninth graders going in. So that tells you that the trend is going up. We have been rising with our graduation rate. I don't know where the ninth grade number came from. The C and D schools are moving on up with all of the initiatives that we have put in them, so I don't think it's really that big a, it's not good to have C and D schools. I mean, we want them all to be A's. But we have put in place the career academy. The AP classes, we've got 72% increase in students taking APs, so they're getting more engaged in the school system, and the teachers are getting more engaged with the students and work for them to do advanced placement classes. And I think that we are on the uprise with the career academies. We just opened another one in South Lake, or Lake Tech. My youngest son, when he got out of school, didn't know what to do, so he went to Lake Tech, and now he's welding at a local business, so he's back here at home. So we are, the move is going in that direction, that we work more one-on-one with our students, so I don't think you're going to see that decline, and we're going to continue to increase kids graduating.
Tree? So you know, definitely, for school year 2010 and 2011, our district has 82.2% of students to, you know, the graduation rate of 82.2%. So that tells you that, what, 80% of our student population is not graduating. So what we need to do, of course, is pushing the graduation effort to ensure that more students are graduating with high school diploma, because this is their success. This is their ticket to success in life and in college. So what do we need to do? We have to look at the parametral analysis of those students who are not graduating and break it down to different categories. And our Lake School District graduation rates are the lowest among Hispanics, Asians, and American Indians. So the evidence suggests that many Hispanic or, you know, Asians are failing to graduate due to perhaps language barriers and family obligations. There are a lot of opportunities, external opportunities, how we and the community can help to improve our graduation rate. We can look at emerging technology. We also need to set standards and expectations for parents to get involved in their children's education system. We also, you know, need to create new opportunities with companies, businesses, community partners to make sure that we offer more vocational courses and career placement opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. Most of you know that I'm the guy who is for uniforms, and I really think uniforms would impact our, how our kids do in school. When I first got on the board, I went to a, at the new board, and I'd be good on the Tampa, and I heard a presentation from Osceola Schools, how they reduced all their distance staff by one-third. And that really impressed me, and I wanted to do that for our schools. And so I started pushing this issue at that time. It didn't go anywhere, so I did more homework, I went down and toured the campuses. My wife and I could feel the difference that uniforms made. It was just a cultural change when kids walk around, uniforms are there to learn. In all our schools, there's Cs and Bs and Ds, but we can one way hire with the lower quartile. I submit, Osceola County has probably the toughest lower quartile anybody could have. They're 70% free and reduced lunch. They're 70% minority. They started this thing, they're in their fourth year right now, and in three years, their GPA, if you average the grades of their high school, went from a 178, which is basically a C and D, to a 380. They had eight As and two Bs for high school grades last year. We had four Bs, two Cs, and a D. So I think it doesn't make them smarter, it changes the culture, they realize they're there to work. To me, franchises, the lower quartile, they are distant franchise, they feel like they're part of the team. And those are the kids we're losing to help, those are the kids that are dropping out, those are the kids that wind up in sports and gym. So I feel very strongly about this. This is Taveris High School, uniforms, jeans and a polo shirt. Thank you.
All right. Well, listen, thank you all so much, first of all, for running for office. It's not fun, it's costly, and then you give up all that time afterwards. Excuse me, I'm a reward for winning. So we thank you very much, and let's have a big round of applause.
Thank you again, candidates, we really appreciate it. I apologize for running over. I just wanted to give them an opportunity to ask one more question since it was pouring, and now the rain has stopped. Thank you very much for coming, and please join us next month for a change in uniform. Thank you. Pardon?
I don't mind if I do another debate, man. Oh, yeah, but it's nice. I mean, I'm just enjoying the great. You work on the end one? You're fine. I got you. I can be out here if I win, I can be out here if I lose, I lift out the boat, whatever you want. You're, I'm done, you're the winner. I'll be in a girl. I wish I was today. Win, win, draw, whatever. All right, all right. I'm going to bring it on down. Thank you. All right. I'm not going to. Before the war, 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 before